You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that are nice to meet. One place that's in my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the Sand Hills on a river called Cake Field. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one hurt around the world. Sherman marched for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville.
Good evening and welcome to the Monday, February 27th, 2017 Fayetteville City Council Meeting. Would like to ask my good friend Johnny Hunter. Pastor Hunter, if you wouldn't mind coming up and giving the invocation. After the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance, stay up at the podium because I want to ask you a couple of questions about your ministry.
Certainly.
Everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation.
Let us pray. Almighty God, and once again, that we ask you to please bless this mayor, bless the city council, and the staff of this local governing body as they address the matters placed before them. Bless them with the wisdom to make the decisions that benefit the citizens. Bless them with all the knowledge they're going to need to act based on the facts and the truth. And bless the youth of this city, Lord, to understand the value of academic achievement, to appreciate their purpose in this life, and to honor their parents. And we actually have mercy on the young and old alike whenever we fail, but inspire those who do community service and reach out to help others. Let the things accomplished in this room this evening bring honor and prosperity to this city. In the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Dr. Hunter, good to see you again, sir.
It's great to see you, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you. I know I see you at least once a month, but tell everybody else out there what you do and tell me about Clifton Community Church and the great things you all are doing over there.
Yes, if I get to serve as the pastor of worship at Clifton Community Church, I tell people I get to play piano every now and then.
And you're with a good man over there, too.
And some Sundays we get to preach. But we really enjoy it. If we had Clifton Community Church, it is a non-denominational congregation. If you walk in, you can't tell whether it's black or white or whatever. We've got a mixture of about everybody in there. And we have 77, 63 Clifton Road, 10 o'clock services, and everybody is welcome to join anytime, but don't leave your church to do it now. But if you don't have a church home, you're always welcome.
Certainly appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. We'll see you next Tuesday. Mr. Bowman, how about coming up here and telling us something about the Pocket Guide?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for having me, council. Thank you for having me and for allowing Don Gardner and I to personally come. And thank you for the long relationship that we've had in promoting our wonderful city. You have allowed us for the last 18 years to market, brand, and promote the great city of Fayetteville, something that we do very well. Fayetteville has always been very sensitive about its image as pertains to the outside world. And for 21 years, 21 years ago, we created the Up and Coming Weekly. And 18 years ago, we partnered with the city of Fayetteville to create a piece of marketing collateral that would speak boldly and proudly about this community and the amenities that affords our city, our citizens, our visitors, our guests, and our newcomers. And that was in the product, The Pocket Guide. It's a community resource directory. And for 18 years, this product has been successful and has served as a resource for this community by providing valuable information free to the general public. The Pocket Guide is a reflection of the entire community containing all the information necessary to enjoy Fayetteville's unique quality of life. From the mayor's welcome letter to a complete listing of the city's offices and departments to listing of all of Cumberland County, public schools, private schools, Christian and parochial schools, to listing all the museums, art galleries, our parks and recreation services, all of our churches, all of our local festivals, theaters, and events. We literally put the city at their fingertips. This publication boasts of important amenities that make our city great and livable. The Fayetteville Regional Airport, our FAST public transportation system, our colleges and universities, FTC and FSU. And of course, it also talks of our dedicated first responders, our police, Fayetteville Police and Fire Departments, and our County Sheriff's Department. We support the mission of Vision 2026, and we use The Pocket Guide to provide the information that makes it easy for businesses to do business here in Fayetteville in Cumberland County. In addition, all the information contained in the small, convenient, three-by-five booklet is online and hyperlinked to the city-related agencies and services. And the best part is that The Pocket Guide is available at over 300 locations throughout the city in Fort Bragg, and it's free. It's free to all individuals, businesses, and organizations and institutions just for the asking. It is provided every week to every new soldier and their family that steps foot on Fort Bragg through the Army of Community Services, and it is available at both welcome centers on the north and south side of I-95. With nearly 1,500 families moving into our community each and every month, The Pocket Guide speaks volumes of our city, of our people, and of our quality of life. Good things last, and as we celebrate our 18th year in partnership with the city, we wanted you to know that we appreciate that partnership. We appreciate everything that you do and your staff does to make the city a great place to live. And we want you to know that this publication is a proud representation of our community and the first responder for information about what it's like to live and work in Fayetteville. We're very proud to be a partner, and we thank you for this opportunity, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
I'd like to hear something from Mr. Gardner.
No, you don't. No, you don't.
Yes, sir. Not a question, just a comment. It's New Bethel African Methodist Episcopal Zion Church. Or you may abbreviate it by saying New Bethel AME Zion. Should be in your area church guide.
It is not.
It is not.
It will be.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you very much, Mr. Bowman.
Thank you. I also want to thank Dr. Lynn McAllister for being here tonight, and Jeff Thompson is here, and I'm here with Jeff. But thank you all very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you for what you do for our community as well.
God bless.
It's hard not to walk into a restaurant and grab one of those magazines. It's certainly an asset to this community. Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Councilmember Jensen had the opportunity to hang out this weekend with some youths. Tell us about the conference, Ms. Jensen.
Well, this weekend Fayetteville was the host city to our state youth council. We had, I think we had over 20 youth councils from the state come to Fayetteville. I got the opportunity, I was sworn in in December at our Fayetteville Youth Council meeting to be part on the board of the state youth council, and had my first meeting right before we had the big opening. And we are doing great things in Fayetteville for our youth. People are looking to Fayetteville for leadership with their youth. We've been doing this for two years, and I can honestly say, thanks to the city and the county, we are definitely ahead in the state with our youth. So I thought that was really some great positive feedback. People are coming to us, asking us, how do we do it? Friday night, after we had our board meeting, we came down here and the mayor came and greeted all the children here in the city council chambers. I would like to give a shout out to our policemen and our firemen. We had a scavenger hunt for all the kids downtown Fayetteville, up and down Hay Street and towards the county courthouse. So they had a big scavenger hunt, and if you were down here on Friday night, you saw about 150 kids trying to find, they had points that they had to go. And I really can say that our police and fire were all out in force, and they were making sure the kids were having a great time, and I do appreciate that. Saturday, they came and they met at College Lakes Rec Center for the day. They had some conference workshops. They had a leadership conference panel, which I had the opportunity, and the mayor was there too, for them to ask us questions. We have a lot of talent out there with our youth through the state. We hope we keep them here. Then on Saturday night, they had a mystery dinner that they did. They usually have a dance, and Fayetteville decided that they were going to do a mystery dinner, and they had game night, so they had like a Family Feud thing going on. And then they stayed Saturday night, and they left Sunday. I know they did have some breaks that they went shopping at our mall. They liked our mall. And the feedback that we have gotten has been great. Our youth did an absolutely great job, and I want to give a shout out to Crystal Glover. I think she had strep throat the whole weekend and just muddled through. But I heard from many people that this was the best conference, youth conference, that they had been to. So I'd like to thank everybody for supporting our youth, and when you see our youth out there, just believe that our future is bright. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jensen. Phil, why don't you join me at the podium?
Mr. Harris, as a proclamation that was prepared by the city of Fayetteville, the officer of the mayor reads as follows. Whereas the American Red Cross Sand Hills Chapter was established on April 26, 1917 in response to a call from President Woodrow Wilson after the start of World War I to assist and comfort communities stricken by disaster, large and small, and to help the able-bodied and disabled veterans and civilians overseas. And whereas the American Red Cross Sand Hills Chapter provides services to local military personnel and their families, including 24/7 emergency messaging, assisting military members and their families through pre-deployment and post-deployment briefings and seminars. And whereas the American Red Cross Sand Hills Chapter continues to partner with the city and county government and civic agencies to help ensure our communities are more ready and resilient in the face of future disasters. And whereas each year, the American Red Cross Sand Hills Chapter provides shelter, clothing, food, and counsel to hundreds of area families who experience a home fire or other disaster such as tornadoes and floods. And whereas the American Red Cross plays a vital role in relief operations by deploying volunteers to rebuild communities hit by disasters and by providing critical support and resources at home and across the nation. And whereas each year, the American Red Cross Sand Hills Chapter trains thousands of local citizens to lead safer and healthier lives through lifesaving skills from swimming and lifeguarding and first aid, CPR, and AED. And whereas each year, the American Red Cross Sand Hills Chapter helps to collect, test, and distribute thousands of lifesaving units of blood and blood products. And whereas our city leadership relies upon our citizens who are motivated to act by our common humanity, this month, let us come together and celebrate Fayetteville's spirit of generosity and the dedicated individuals and organizations who keep the spirit alive. Signed by Mayor Nat Robinson on behalf of the city council, we do honorably proclaim the month of March 2017 as American Red Cross Month.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. It is with great honor that I present this proclamation to the American Red Cross at their 100th anniversary as well. Thank you. You guys certainly came to the aid of a lot of the flood victims in this area, and I think probably continue to serve those that were devastated by the floods. So Phil, I really do appreciate what you do for the community.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
If you'd like to say a few words.
March is Red Cross Month, and we're particularly proud this year because it's our 100th anniversary. And we couldn't do it without our volunteers, and this is the month we celebrate with our volunteers. We talked about Hurricane Matthew, and I can't give a big enough shout out to city staff for what they did. But our biggest disaster in our community is a single-family home fire. And in our nine-county area, we have one a night. We had nine over the weekend. So our volunteers are mobilized in helping those people. So the Red Cross means a lot of things to a lot of people, whether it's the mayor kicked off our smoke alarm installation project, and since September 10th, we've installed over 1,000 smoke alarms. So we want to be prepared so we can respond, and that's what we did during the hurricane, and we're recovering, and that's what we're doing now. So whether it's, we celebrate our volunteers, and how you can help is you can be prepared because we know it may happen to us. And give a dollar of your money, give an hour of your time, or a pint of your blood, and that's what builds the Red Cross. So for 100 years, we're going to be in it for the next 100, and we're supporting the city, and we look forward to the next chapter in what we have to help in our community. So thank you for your proclamation, and we look forward to the next 100 years.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you all.
At this time, if Ms. Patricia Best would meet Mayor Protem Colvin at the podium. So Mayor Protem is getting ready to present an award to Ms. Patricia Best, and this award is presented to the individual who has led their internal employee campaign with passion and great communication skills throughout 2016 United Way Annual Campaign. Patricia truly went above and beyond. She tried new things with the city campaign, and she's dedicated to ensuring that the campaign was well organized. She also made sure that the campaign was structured in a way that allowed the employees of the city to have various opportunities to give through fundraising and learn about the impact of the agency through private giving at their agency fair. Patricia was a key part in helping the city recruit new leadership givers as well. And on top of that, more good news. I think I'm just supposed to read this part perhaps. The city of Fayetteville is the recipient of the Cumberland County United Way Spirit of the Community Award. This award is presented to an organization exhibiting outstanding year-round support of the community, not only through United Way but also through the local nonprofit agencies throughout Cumberland County. The city of Fayetteville always provides dedicated volunteers to serve as loaned executives during the United Way Annual Campaign. In terms of year-round support, the city always has several employees volunteer during the Days of Caring. The city's leadership representation on the United Way Board and employees are granted 16 hours a year in order to volunteer out in the community. The city also hosted an agency fair for the first time in efforts to not only raise money for the United Way but allow employees to get a glimpse of the important work local nonprofits accomplish as a result of their giving. nonprofits accomplish as a result of their giving. Most notably, the City of Fayetteville has increased in leadership giving, uh, which totaled this past year, uh, with an overall raised of ninety-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars. So congratulations, Mr. Hewitt, and all the city employees who, uh, who worked very hard to raise that money for the United Way. Thank you. At this point, I'll go to Mayor Protim.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move that we, uh, excuse Councilmember Arp and Wright, uh, in their absence this evening.
Seconded by Mr. Moan. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify. Madam Clerk, that is an excused absence for Mr. Arp and Mr. Wright and that is unanimous vote showing that. Thank you. Council, item five point zero is the approval of the agenda.
So move.
Ms. Mayor Protim Colvin, seconded by Ms. Jensen. Any discussion? Sing none. Counsel, ask for your vote. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous by members present. Six point zero is the consent agenda. Counsel, I'll go to you for action. Mr. McDougal.
I move that we approve the consent agenda. Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protim. Any discussion?
What's wrong? I'm the old one that's supposed to be half sick, but let's get some life in here. We sound like we're afraid to motion. Can I motion again on top of the motion?
You can third the motion there, Mr. Crisp. All right, seeing no, uh, no further discussion, I'll ask for your vote, please, counsel. Madam Clerk, that also is unanimous. Seven point zero is reports from boards and commissions. Seven point zero one is welcoming our good friend Donald Warren. Sir, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. I'm here to present the airport's annual report to the council. I'm joined this evening by airport manager Brad Whited and fellow commission member Gene Vance. And I am Donald Warren, the current chair of the Fayetteville Airport Commission. The first item I have to report on this evening is the upcoming terminal renovation, which is our most exciting thing that's going on at the moment. We did take bids for this work that is to begin on the airport for the renovation. However, they came in over budget. Uh, so the design team has gone back, they're working on some value engineering, uh, trying to address some of the differences in the cost. Uh, we will need to bid these out again, um, in order to award a bid. Uh, the FAA grant was accepted by the city council in August of 2016 and that is money that will go towards this renovation project. Uh, and the design team has been in and briefed the commission on various, uh, value engineering changes that may take place as part of the renovation. On January 25th, 2017, the FAA notified the airport that it should rebid part one at this time. The design team is working to reopen the pre-qualification process in an effort to increase the bidder pool and looking to issue bids near the end of April of 2017. The airport staff and the design team are working hard to adjust for these factors and to begin the work this year in 2017. If the second bids come in within budget, we would expect approximately a twelve-month delay from the start of, um, from last year's start date. We're also considering expanding some of the terminal work into a third phase, a third part. I have a couple of items to report on air service in our community. Uh, the airport completed a leakage study, a study on traffic using alternative airports rather than flying out of our local airport. Some statistics from that study indicate seventy-five percent of city residents make use of the Fayetteville Airport when they choose to fly. The Fayetteville Airport has a service area that is defined as being between Lumberton and Spring Lake and Wagram and Godwin and within that service area, forty-four percent make use of the Fayetteville Airport. Primary leakages were to Raleigh Durham and to Charlotte Douglas. Our aircraft type and frequencies of flights have remained relatively the same. We have a mixture of jets and turboprops that are serving in the Fayetteville market. Under economic development notes, uh, we've approved Sierra Nevada and Phoenix Global Services lease extensions for another year and plan to negotiate next year for longer terms. Uh, the design of the airline terminal improvement project obtained the first half of our discretionary FAA funding and our entitlement, which totaled eleven million, nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars. That is towards phase one of the renovation project. Uh, we've approved extension of rental car agency lease agreements. Uh, we've completed a general aviation rates and charges study, uh, which compares the rates and charges charged for general aviation services with other comparable-sized airports. And our statistics as far as passengers, our passenger employment and deplanement numbers have increased one point four percent over 2015's numbers for a combined total of passengers served, four hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-three for the year 2016. Thirty-seven percent of those are personal, thirty-four percent business, and twenty-seven percent military passengers. Our total usage of the USO at the airport facility was thirty-four thousand, five hundred and seventeen servicemen and women served last year. Uh, and items looking forward to, bidding for terminal improvement project, part two, is expected to begin in July 2017 and we are, as I said, looking at possibly shifting some of that into a third phase, uh, for the ticket wing, uh, to create a part three to that project.
The only question that, uh, that I have, the, the large project that the bids, you had to resubmit, uh, or I guess, uh, a new RFP, is that?
That's correct.
When did that go out?
Brad, do you know when it went out?
Or when do you expect it back, I guess?
Yeah, we, the, the, the bids are, the rebidding is planned to go out near the end of April. And so approximately three weeks after that was when we received the bids. Uh, the process will be that we'll open up, uh, the pre-qualification process prior to that.
So the bids have not gone back out?
No, they have not.
Correct.
Expected to go out end of April.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Hurst.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Warren, thank you for your report. Uh, Mr. Whited, um, you and I talked at the strategic planning retreat and I don't expect you to give out the numbers or anything like that, but when council received preliminary estimates of what this job would entail and the, um, and the bids came back, and you're right, significantly larger. So what's to say, even though the engineering team is together to kind of review and, uh, and kind of tweak that, what happens if, um, in the end of April or early May, that the bids come back not that much different than what they came in? Do we, what do we do with the project? I mean, we accept those, uh, way out of line bids or what? Move forward or what?
Well, we'd have to identify additional money in order to do that. Um, so right now, we're limited to, you know, what was planned in the project. We've cut back significantly on some of the features of the building. Uh, for instance, uh, we had some arched roofs that we put over the concourses and we planned on re-skinning the building with, uh, a steel insulated panel. Those, uh, elements have been cut back.
So it's more cosmetic rather than the, taking away the technology or the safety?
That's right.
Okay.
Reorganization of internal parts of the building remain, the new restaurant, the new concourse. We have cut a slice of about twenty-five feet out of the concourse to make it a little shorter, to cut some costs. So if the, it would be, from my perspective, it would be difficult for the bids to come in the same because we have cut back on the elements.
Okay, but you know, usually as time goes on, costs go up. Hey, but you're not going to, we, we should probably go ahead and, and move forward with it so we don't get another twelve-month delay on the airport.
Yes, we're, we're ready to, uh, in April, we'll be rebidding the project and, and we'll report back on those bids. Hopefully we'll have good news for you.
I'm getting, I'm getting old and I want to fly some more before it gets too late. Thank you.
We're going to keep flying.
Thank you so much.
Mr. McDougal.
Uh, two questions. Uh, number one is, uh, did we seek any additional funding? You said if it, if they come in higher, then you might look for some. Was there a reason that we didn't look initially?
Well, the FAA has a, we're, we're in a special program, a discretionary program that the FAA has for non-Hub airports, which is our category. The current limit of that discretionary money is twenty million dollars. That's the maximum. We don't, we don't have the flexibility to get more at this point in time unless Congress changes the program, which they're discussing a variety of options, uh, but I don't, you know, whether that's one or not, it's not currently one of them.
Okay. As information for the general public, could you tell us what we were looking for and what the bids came in at?
Well, I-
In other words, how much money did you have to spend?
I, I, I mean, overall, the whole, the general project is thirty-five million dollars. Uh, thirty million of construction, but we debated about half of that, so.
So what did the bids come in at?
Bids came in at twenty million for half of it. So it's ten million over.
So the bids came in at thirty and then we had twenty million.
Well, we only bid half the project, so it came in at twenty million. And, uh, so it was way over our, over our project budget, so. We're make, we made adjustments and we hope those, we believe those adjustments will result in a, a better bid, but, uh, it takes the marketplace to do that.
Thanks, sir. Gentlemen. Mr. Colvin.
Mr. Whited, um, we are trying out the construction management risk, uh, process with the baseball stadium or proposing to. Uh, was any reason why you didn't try that with the airport project?
Well, I haven't, I haven't used that personally and, uh, I guess I'm a little traditional in, uh, feel more comfortable in knowing what, uh-
Just explain to the general public what, what we're talking about. So basically, you establish a budget and then you bid it out and then the folks work towards your budget. So you don't typically have an overrun, ten million dollar overrun because you know on the front end what your maximum amount is. So you can go ahead with your explanation.
Well, and then, you know, in that scenario, I think you lose a little bit of the control of what, what you're going to get. I mean, you know, the contractor is bidding the project and giving you, uh, his suggestion on materials and, and so forth, so. Uh, I mean, it's, it's one of those things that is used in the industry. We, we chose to go by the traditional method.
Thank you. Don't see any further questions. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warren. Counsel eight point zero one is the bid recommendation for annexation phase five, project number eight, area nineteen, which is Aaron Lake subdivision. Mr. Crisp.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Just so that our citizens understand, this is a bid to install water and sewer lines in Aaron Lake subdivision. And fortunately, the, uh, low bidder was a local company, Billy Bill Grading. And so I do move to accept the bid recommendation, annex phase five, project eight, area nineteen, Aaron Lake subdivision, with the, uh, contract to be awarded to Billy Bill Grading.
Second. Motion by Bill Crisp, seconded by Mr. McDougal. And, uh, discussion?
Yep.
Mr. Moan.
Yes, we had, um, two bid options. The first one was six point one eight one, some million dollars for a, a patch. And then the alternate bid was six point five and some million dollars for a complete, you know, one and a half inch overlay. Um, and of that, that extra money, then we would take out of our general fund or our street resurfacing fund. So the question is, are you making the bid for the, the base bid without the one and a half inch, um, complete resurfacing or the alternate bid?
I was making it, I was, I was thinking that we would do it in two parts. I was going to make the, the base bid because PWC is handling that. And then we would do, uh, the overlay in terms of a second way if, if, or do we need to wrap it all in one and do it as two separate? Deputy City Manager? City Manager, what's the best way to do this?
Well, as I understand it, um, you want to, PWC is asking for, um, uh, for an answer. I think that you probably could do it as part of one, just to say that you accept, um, the alternative, um, if it is for the overlay or for the patch. Pick, um, I think there were two bidders on both and just, um, direct, um, that you are willing, uh, that you either want the overlay or you want the patch. And, um, then, uh, council accepts it and then the staff would work out the details from there. If I heard your question correctly.
I withdraw my motion. Let Mr. Moan make the motion.
Well, Bill, I think all you had to do and I was saying it was, what was to say with the overlay?
I want the overlay. I don't want the patch.
Mayor, members, council, if you look at, um, at options under, on, uh, page two of two of this CAM, it is the, then the motion would likely be approved, alternative, alternate bid overlay for construction of annexation phase, project eight, area nineteen, Aaron Lake subdivision to Billy Bill Grading, Inc. of Fayetteville, North Carolina.
That was, that was the first motion I made.
That's right.
And then the second part, may I reinstate the motion, Mr. Mayor, or make it again?
Uh, yes, sir. You can, uh, refine your motion, I guess.
Start over. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Then I move to approve the base bid for the recommendation of annex phase five, project eight, area nine, nineteen, Aaron Lake subdivision to Billy Bill Grading of Fayetteville, North Carolina for the permanent patch. The second part of my motion is to approve the alternate bid overlay.
You only need to do one or the other, then?
That's not right.
Yeah, it, it's all one motion.
Okay.
We're, we're, you want to approve the bid with-
I want to approve-
With the overlay.
Bid with the overlay.
Correct.
For construction of annex phase five, project eight, area nineteen, Aaron Lake subdivision to Billy Bill Grading of Fayetteville, North Carolina. I finally got it right.
Okay. Very good. Mr. McDougal, uh, clarified his, uh, his second to that. Uh, Mr. Moan, you have further comment? Okay. Mr. Devereux.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Counsel seeing no further comments, I'll ask for your vote. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous by members present. Eight point zero two is Shawcroft Road Temporary Culvert.
Where?
Prepare, Mr. Rob Stone, welcome.
Mayor, City Council, good to see you. Real quick too, um, before I move into this particular item, I would like to, the last time I was before you given a hurricane recovery update for the roadway repairs, I had to give you the bad news that we had moved our timeline, which was August, and that was based on us being able to use our general service agreements, which we found out later it was not in our best interest to make sure we get reimbursement, that we go through a, a RFQ process and that put us a little delay on the front part of our projects. So our timeline had moved to December. Um, upon, at, at recommendation of the council, we sat down with staff and sat down with purchasing department and looked at where we could control things and where we could trim some time. One of the first things we did was for the RFQs for design, we were allowing sixty days to do that design. First thing we did was do an addendum and we li, uh, asked for thirty days for that. So we were, uh, able to cut that back. So looking at some other places, our new timeline is we're looking in, uh, mid-September now. So we have cut about ninety days off our original, well, our revised estimate. So that was just sitting down with, uh, with, with, um, staff and looking through the, through the timeline. So we were happy to give that date. So although we're still missing our original August date, we have moved it, um, we're only off about four weeks now. So hopefully, as long as we don't run into any permitting issues or any utility issues, we're going to stay on that track, so. Uh, real quick, on the Shawcroft Road, um, we've had, as you're aware, we've had several meetings with, um, the, um, sorry. Any questions on that? I apologize. Okay. Uh, we had several meetings with King's Grant and also with Cedar Falls Baptist Church, who has allowed us to bu, build a, build a temporary access road to King's Grant on Shawcroft. You'll remember Shawcroft was destroyed when, when during the hurricane, the culvert was blown out. out. One of the things they asked was for staff to take a look at it, an in-depth investigation of doing a temporary culvert in that area. So we met with, or we talked with all the permitting agencies, utility companies, material suppliers, contractors, and purchasing to take a look at that proposal. So what we came up with was to remove existing debris and aluminum culvert, which is, I'll give the information there on the screen, and also to replace that temporarily with a, install two corrugated steel arch pipes with the size there. One of the things about the particular corrugated steel, it's readily available from the manufacturer. It's, compared to about a six to eight-week minimum timeline for either aluminum or concrete that you would normally put in for a long-term project. We do get it less expensive because of that material, but on the same side, it's not as, it's not as, offers longevity through the time, so it wouldn't be there for long term. So it makes it, it makes a good selection for a temporary fix. Looking at a anticipated completion date based on all the information we've got for about mid-April. The initial estimate we have is around $300,000 for this. The one concern we have of this, which may not be eligible for FEMA reimbursement, we won't know that until we actually propose it, if we do do it, and send the requirements back to FEMA to ask for reimbursement. So there is a possibility, but in conversations with our consultant for our FEMA experts is that this may not be reimbursed.
But if not by FEMA, may be reimbursed by either the state rainy day fund or the extra HUD money that the governor is going to be dispersing between the municipalities and the counties that were affected.
Yes, sir, we would definitely ask for that. So that was, I'm making it short, just looking for direction from council to see if we would like to move forward with that.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. Is there questions? Mayor Protim.
Mr. Stone, I appreciate that, and this is kind of related to the storm, but not necessarily related to this, to this item. So I just wanted to ask before someone put a motion up. Can you give the citizens an update? There's a, there's a road in District Three, Shaw Mill Road, which is near the Rose Hill area. It's been closed for some time. Can you give us an update about when DOT said that may be reopened?
I checked DOT website not too long ago, and they're looking at the end of April for that. I think the date they had was April 28th is their expected date now.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Ma'am, Ms. Jensen.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Shawcroft Road Temporary Culvert Repair.
Seconded by Mayor Protim. Is there discussion? Seeing none, council, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous by members present. Council, entertain a motion adjourned.
So move.